Okay, good night, everybody. Good evening.
Good night, we're all done.
Good night, good evening.
We're all done. Time to go. Man, I'm fed up with it.
Motion to adjourn, yes, thank you. Welcome to tonight's Town and Dudley Board of Selectmen and FAA Joint Meeting Thursday, March ninth, two thousand twenty-three. We'll call this meeting in order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll begin with the, oh, so without objection, the Board of Selectmen Chair will facilitate the meeting, both FAA and Board of Selectmen to bring business to a vote or take any other action relative to the agenda as required. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes, sir, I agree with that.
Yes.
Good. No objection.
Okay. Well, start with the Town Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to report out first on, well, I'd like to report out solely on what's occupied my time, and the treasurer's time, the accountant's time, my consultant's time, and a lot of department heads' time since we last met. And that was to go back with some direction from the board and from the FAA to take a scalpel to the hatchet budget that we presented last, yeah, last meeting that necessarily called for a ten percent reduction. So I'll summarize the reductions before we open the hearing that, and the changes and adjustments that I put into place, which will take up when you open the public hearing. So, based on the feedback received by the Board of Selectmen on the ten percent reduction budget presented on February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and the resulting impacts to town services, the following outlines the changes that I have made to my recommendations to the budget. First is to reduce highway materials to a six-month level of funding, and there is no change to the snow and ice budget. Replace approximately fifty thousand dollars into the fire department expenses, overtime, cancer screenings, et cetera. Fund FAA reserve at twenty thousand dollars. Replace funding to police budget to retain both officers previously slated to be laid off after six months. Replace six months of funding to the police department administrative assistant slated to be laid off on July first of two thousand twenty-three. Reduce one highway truck driver laborer to six months of funding. Reduce treasurer collector admin to six months of funding. Reduce assessor clerk to six months of funding. Reduce animal control officer to six months of funding. Replace minimal funding to town clerk's budget to allow for management of elections and services through FY twenty-four, projecting minimal election cost and staffing. And so what does this mean? Two officers will be minimally funded throughout the fiscal year, increasing public safety, protecting officer safety, and minimizing overtime to backfill unsafe staffing levels. The fire department will receive additional funding to address maintenance, cancer screening, and partial expenses and overtime through the fiscal year. It also provides minimal funding to FAA reserve to address minor emergency funding issues. And this will necessarily require a minimal of one-day-week closure of the town hall to allow remaining staff to concentrate on administration, administrative work in the loss of a, in the resulting loss of a day's service to the public. What action doesn't this fix? Well, it leaves the highway shorthanded going into the winter with some minimal potential of temporarily reassigning the truck drivers slated to be laid off to the water sewer to backfill an extended absence, and we're still talking about that. It further results in the loss of two staff members from the town hall and the revenue department with the treasurer collector's office and in the assessor's office. The town will be without an animal control officer in six months, and I will need to see what, if any, alternatives the town can negotiate, such as an IMA. The police department will be without an administrative assistant in six months, shifting payroll, detail invoicing, administrative clerical work, et cetera, to the chief and or lieutenant or whomever he, he assigns, reducing time available for grant work programs, training, compliance with the latest regulations, et cetera. We will not have funding for anticipated mandated costs such as the social worker in the police department. Highway materials and equipment will be short six months of funding, directly impacting road maintenance. Chapter ninety money plan for bridge demolition and matching grant funding will be redirected toward immediate road maintenance needs. Most importantly and of significant concern remains that it leaves no room in either the police department or the fire department budgets for line item overruns. An overrun in the police budget will likely result in the loss of an officer, and the fire department will require additional funding through available sources potentially in October to prevent the same. And I'll just, I just made that statement, potentially in October, we don't have any free cash numbers at this point. So, further on in this summary, we'll talk about prioritizing at the end of the, in October. Additional actions taken, an additional transfer will be required from stabilization to provide for food inspections in the board of health budget, grant and project design to provide minimal funding, and I mean minimal, to address dam inspections and maintain grants that are currently underway or in the application phase. And finally, to increase the municipal energy line item, provide six months of funding for IT-related items. And what does this mean? This means that we will be able to complete food inspections, but likely will run short of fully funding our health agent for the, for the year. We will be able to meet our mandates with dam inspections and may be able to keep existing grant applications alive, but we will have no additional source of funding for new applications. Finally, we will have a minimal IT budget, and the service levels will reflect it. Any overrun will result in cuts to our online services, and that's beyond what the assessor has already presented at our last meeting. What action doesn't this fix? Minimal funding, twenty-five percent requirement will be available in grant and project design line item, meaning that it will need to be used to do minimal work toward compliance with dam inspections, stormwater reporting. The balance, if any, will be used towards keeping existing grant programs viable. However, there will be no additional money to apply for grant funding of any type that requires upfront engineering cost, program and administration contributions or design. We will be unable to increase service levels for our shared health agent, and housing complaints will fall significantly behind. Any available time with the health agent will be reactive. There will be no grant applications for clinics or staff, and no health programs, hazardous materials day, earth day, et cetera. We will have underfunded help desk, meaning that IT issues may need to be addressed or, or at a more costly rate, meaning that we'd have to secure outside vendor services to repair them. It doesn't fund OPEB. No money is budgeted for landfill compliance and testing. Reduced amount in legal to recover money for compliance testing and remediation. No professional dues or memberships. Minimal for town hall HVAC seasonal maintenance. It costs about six thousand dollars for us to simply change over from AC to heat and go through that whole maintenance regimen. There's no funding for out-of-district student or transportation municipal cost, no seasonal help for building and grounds, and a big hit to town's bond rating and ability to borrow. So what will the October town meeting look like? Based on free cash numbers, we will need to appropriate any additional source of revenue defensively to mitigate risk in order of priority. And before we think about fully funding positions that we are now proposing to lay off after six months, we will need to determine what the biggest risks are if left unfunded. Public safety and health, legal regulatory inspections, compliance and testing, contractual obligations, OPEB unemployment. And then the town will need to determine what, if any, cost-cutting measure, if continued, will result in a town being ineligible to apply for grant funding or result in loss of state funding. That requires that certain funding levels be maintained, such as the library, I'm sure you'll hear more about that tonight. Complete streets and safe routes funding, mass work, CDBG, they all require minimal investment from the town to yield large results. Further, we will need to determine when planning for the October town meeting, if, when we have received certified free cash numbers and we have weighed those numbers against all the issues that puts the town at an immediate risk, we will need to consider not just whether it makes sense to fully fund the positions that have been slated for a layoff after six months, but instead whether it makes sense to continue to fund them for six months. So we've managed to address immediate emergent needs in my recommended budget, budget if the override fails, but it's, it's a shoestring at this point.
Any questions for the Town Administrator? Thank you. Citizens comments, anyone from the meeting tonight that wants to talk about something that's not on the agenda? All right, seeing none. All right, we're gonna open the public hearing, talk more about the budget. And open the meeting, the hearing at six forty-two. Mr. Town Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions based on that summary. If there are department heads that may want to talk about the changes I've made and the impact to their department at all, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have, the public may have.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have much of a question as I do a statement. I know a lot of time and resources have gone into this report, and it is a grim one, but it is reality, and those are the facts, that based on the real numbers that we're working with or not working with. So when you do have your questions or comments, just keep that in mind that this, this is a factual statement. We don't want it to happen, we want everything to go nice. We want to keep everybody where they are, doing the best they can, and not cut anything, if at all possible. So I just keep that in mind, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just hope that at the end of today, the voters will, will get the information they need to make an educated decision, meaning what's the cost, what do they get for that cost, and if they vote no, what are the ramifications of voting no? That's it. You vote no, here's what's hap, here is, here is what happens. You vote yes, here is what happens, here, here is how much it costs. That's all. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my usual anti-social media rant. Don't get, don't find your information on Facebook, don't find it from someone that doesn't know what you're talking about, spitballing against the wall. The people that are gonna speak tonight, the department heads that spoke at the last meeting, those are the people that are empowered in their position, those are the people we entrust to run our day-to-day, Town Administrator. Your chance to get your information is watched tonight. Come to a meeting and ask a question, please don't believe everything you see on social media.
Motion.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll add to that a little bit, what Carrie said. Not only, what I expect to the penny, people will understand, amounts, percents, whiff 'em, what's in it for me, that needs to be repeated over and over and over again, not just at one meeting, not just on one post or in a paper, all, all methods, all media, you gotta keep telling everybody so that nothing is left on the table, so they can make informed decisions.
FAA, anything?
Mike?
Yeah, I have a couple questions, this will be for John, I guess. On the budget overview, without override, John, what happened, the debt exclusion went down to nine eighty? What was, is that being moved, that number being moved to a, to an override?
Those were based on adjusted numbers for, in the treasurer's budget, I believe, is that what you're referring to? We, we had a two-day exercise back and forth with Rich and our town accountant and the, our consultant from the Abrahams Group, and that was the number that was changed.
Right, I guess I'll ask Rich on that. It was one, almost one point eight.
Right.
So where'd that go?
It is the fire truck. So, the original budget had money to purchase the fire truck. Debt excluded for seven seventy-five, and there's gonna be some interest associated with it. We were going to buy it for two thousand twenty-four, we were going to exclude that payment, so it was gonna be a one-for-one. So the treasurer collector budget goes down by what wasn't being excluded. So if we're going to buy it in year two, if we're gonna buy it in year two, it will appear in year two. So that's the reason your ability, that's the reason you want your DE one to be level or, or slowly increasing. So the eleven, the one million, one forty, seven thirty-two had the debt for this building on it. The original submission had the fire truck, public safety vehicles, and it had the brine machine in it. We have delivery of the brine machine, we have delivery of the two public safety vehicles, and we're gonna pay them and exclude them in the upcoming year. We're not gonna have the other item in. So it's just going to be for next year. So at the end of the day, we, we've gone through the exercise of, let's make sure this is right and, and prove the debt out backwards. So if we're not buying it in the year, we can't exclude it in the year.
Thank you.
Any other questions while we have Rich up?
It's not, not for Rich.
Thanks, Rich. Any other questions for the Town Administrator?
So John, when you're looking at, looking at that same sheet with that, that exclusion reduction, if you pull off the enterprise accounts, it looks like your revenue was about twenty-two million. Am I correct there? Would that be inaccurate? Going to thirty-nine, three million, nine twenty out?
You're looking at the overview sheet?
This one here, the budget over, the road review without.
Yeah.
That correct one, come down to twenty, your revenue's twenty-two, one, one five?
That sounds right, are you looking at an actual total, or you, you adding it up on a calendar?
Yeah, I'm just doing, I'm just.
Sounds accurate.
Twenty-five, two, four, eight, five, eight, five, oh, something, thank you. Two, zero. Excuse me, twenty-one, three, twenty-seven?
You have to take out three two hundred.
Well, two, you're gonna take out this?
Take that. Yeah.
You gotta take out this, because that's, that's part of the enterprise, too.
All right, so, so basically just over twenty-one, then?
Yeah.
That'll put you real, that'll put you real tight.
Tight as a drum.
Um, is that, you also include in that?
But that doesn't consider any free cash in the fall, this is, I mean, we usually start off behind the eight ball and try to get that number anyway.
I don't know if I have the revenue sheet, is, was there any increased revenue projections? Or were they all level? The only one I saw was your excise tax.
Is that the only one? We decreased the projection, right, Debbie, for?
Cannabis tax, excise tax went up, you know, because that's brand new.
Right.
They weren't business a whole year last year, so for this year, that went up, and when you piece the road vehicle a little bit, most of the things stayed pretty level on the.
So for cannabis, you're going, so you want, you think you're gonna make the sixty? It's like sixty, Grant?
We're gonna make more than that.
Think so? Okay.
They were actually estimating eighty-four, eighty-four thousand, and we wanted to keep it conservative.
Okay. Um, I guess my other question then would be, I know the, I know BayPath numbers came in.
Yeah, we made that adjustment.
Yeah, that's on there? Do we have the Dudley Chelton amount?
The number on the, if the override, without override, the number is accurate on the sheet.
So thirteen million?
That's not, I think you're looking at the wrong column. It's ten. Ten million, thirty-six thousand, three oh eight.
That's with the, that's with the adjustments?
That's with the override failing with the adjustment.
So, so you need, just trying to figure out the actual numbers. So, on the town side, without the school, you're asking for basically a million?
To get back to?
Level funding?
All right, it's a little over a million because we used some ARPA money, and run out the rest of the ARPA money and apply that toward.
Was that, one sixty-six?
One sixty-six, yeah.
Okay. In the school side, do we have a number yet?
We're also adding stabilization into that amount.
Right, this half a million dollars there, too, so.
So that comes out to a one, basically a million six of the override request.
And the school was, how much was the school?
The school was ten million, thirty-six, seven, three oh eight.
They also have their increased amount over that, right?
That's, that's the override fails amount. Is that what you're asking?
No, I, I just want, I mean, you gotta set it, you get, the school set at ten, ten million, thirty-six, but what is it, what is their actual request?
Their actual request is eleven, it says thirteen million there, it's eleven million.
Okay.
A mil, what is it, Rich, exactly?
Do we have that yet, Rich?
Yeah, with the override, thirteen million.
Oh, you think he's asking about the assessment?
I'm just, I'm just asking, I mean, we have an assessment from BayPath, so I'm just kinda looking for the assessment from Shep Nell.
Good. Last night, we voted on eleven million, three hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars.
Okay.
And that was for level service budget.
And the difference, Mr. Chairman, between the thirteen, two oh eight that you see there and the eleven million can be better explained to you, includes capital and so forth. When the school comes up and when Mr. Matthew or whomever talks about those additional amounts. But the assessment straight up is eleven million.
And what, is there anything above that? Nothing above that?
For the assessment, no. So it's.
That doesn't, does that include the roofs?
No, the thirteen million includes, includes it.
Thirteen, okay. So, so.
It, it was, how, being down to the wire, it was hard to pull those, those additional two or three numbers out.
It was, how, being down to the wire, it was hard to pull those, those additional two or three numbers out.
Should we note that we have to do two hearings, one for the 10% reduction and then a separate hearing for the, if the override passes?
All right. So, if anybody else wants to speak, you can, I'm just doing a little bit of math here, so.
Anyone else have any discussion about the 10% reduction budget?
Okay, so, you want, mind if I? So the, the difference then is 1.9. First year, we used that for the, for the roof projects?
Essentially, I, I think when they talk about if the override passes budget, they can break those down specific to, to the penny numbers for you.
Right, but I'm, you know, just, just rounding off. So, so the 11,3, that's the assessment, 11,300, 1.9 then becomes paid in year one for the assess, for the capital projects.
Correct.
Thereafter is going to be, what's, what's our plans thereafter with that?
Can I, can I close this hearing before we're done talking about the 10% reduction? You okay with that, Mike?
That, that's fine.
Most of this is all if the override passes?
Yeah, okay.
All right, anyone else about 10% reduction? Okay. I'm going to close public hearing at 6:58. All right. What's the board's pleasure on the town administrator's fiscal year 2024 reduced budget recommendation? Looking for a vote for approval?
We need three votes. No, we actually only need it from the board for these, for these items.
We have to start with the first one, so.
So I'm asking Mr. Chairman for a vote. Again, this is a draft working budget. This vote is symbolic that this is where we're going to start from as things progress. This is a draft reduction budget that we don't know if we're going to implement yet or not. We don't know if there's going to be any further changes to it. I just want to accept it so I have a baseline to start with at this point. I made, I made the adjustments asked, asked by the board, and this is where we're at.
Board's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the town administrator's FY '24 reduced budget recommendation or take any other action relative there, too.
Second. Discussion? Is this roll call or no?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Stained? Unanimous. All right, next, board selectman. Mike?
Oh, um, are you looking for a recommendation from FAA, too?
It says two separate votes. What does that mean?
Yeah, we have to be a separate vote, but yeah, based on the reduction.
You want us, wants to do that now, or you're looking for 21?
Again, it's a draft baseline budget, so it's your prerogative whether you're.
Basically, you're looking for 22 million. Is that the number you're looking for?
I'm looking for that number for the reduced budget. Definitely just run through them.
Does anybody want to make a motion to recommend the 21?
I'll make a motion to recommend.
It's this one right there.
20,971,226 reduction for the 10%.
Got that? Just, just one more time, what was the number? I'm sorry.
Uh, I think the number was 20,971,226.
Need a second?
Is there a second on it?
I second.
Okay, any, any discussion on that number for reduced budget? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Unanimous?
Good.
Thanks, Mike.
Next, Mr. Chairman, I'm asking for the board to vote to call a special election for April 25. Suggested motion down below.
Mr. Sinovich?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to call a special election for April 25, 2023 for the purposes of asking the voters to vote on allowing the town to assess an additional sum in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of operational expenses for the Dudley-Chowton Regional School District and operational expenses for the town of Dudley.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Stained? Unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item three is a vote on opting in to walk-in voting.
Town clerk?
Good evening. According to the new Votes Act, we would have to make, the board of registrars would make a recommendation to the board of selectmen if we wanted to opt into the early voting. We did hold a meeting of the board of registrars this evening, and it was unanimously voted to recommend to the board of selectmen that we do offer voters the early voting. So what we are recommending is that it would be for the week prior to the election. Look at the dates here. So we are recommending that we would have it the following three days. So it would be Tuesday, April 18, Wednesday, April 19, and Thursday, April 20, between the hours of 8:30 and 4:00 p.m. Monday is a holiday, which is why we did not include Monday. And Friday, we could not have it because according to the new law, we have to stop the early voting two days before the election. So to have it all in that week, it would be those three days. And it was unanimously voted to recommend that to you tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It's the board's pleasure based on that recommendation. Mr. Sinovich?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to allow opt-in, walk, I'd like to move to allow walk-in voting for the April 25, 2023 special election on the following three days, between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. April 18, 2023, April 19, 2023, and April 20, 2023, with the specific location in the town hall and related instructions to be determined and posted by the town clerk.
Second. Any discussion? Mr. Mars?
Yeah, I just still want to thank the town clerk and the registrars for bringing that up. That was kind of what I was looking for last time when we talked about the other changes that we had to make to voting, so thanks for bringing that forward.
Yeah, it sounds like it's a good compromise between some options and what it used to be. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Helps if I hold the vote.
Mr. Chairman, if the board's going to act on number four, at the time that this agenda was posted, the numbers were slightly different. I'd ask the person who makes the motion to refer to either one of these screens or look in the OneDrive and you'd see the change in the question. So originally, the question, the municipal side of the, as posted, the municipal side of the override request was 1,808,192. It's now 1,674,514. Part of that change was, is Mr. Mayotte picked up on immediately and asked the treasurer to explain his, the change in that schedule and some other changes that I made within the budget.
Board's pleasure. Mr. Sinovich?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to send the following question to the April 25, 2023 special election ballot. Shall the town of Dudley be allowed to assess an additional $4,846,597 in real estate and personal property taxes for the purposes of operational expenses for the Dudley-Chowton Regional School District in the amount of $3,172,83 dollars in no sense and operational expenses for the town of Dudley in the amount of $1,674,514 in no sense for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2023?
A motion, you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to, it's a big number up there. It's a huge number up there, and I, I really want people to understand where the, where this number is actually coming from. So to make it clear, to come back to at least a level fund for the town of Dudley without using stabilization fund, you're looking at 1.674 is what you need, correct?
Correct.
The school's assessment went up by one, basically 1.3 is what they need to operate. And then on top of that is 1.9 to fix the roofs and the other capital projects, which amounts to the 13.2. Am I correct? That make sense?
The business manager.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. The 1.9 is actually both for the feasibility study for the potential renovations at Shepherd Hill Regional High School as well as to use the balance of that to fund the roof projects at Dudley Middle School.
All right, so it comes with that?
It's those two separate things, yes.
The feasibility study, since this is a town override and we're funding that through the town override, the grant money that comes back on that, what's the intentions?
That, that money will come back to the district. We'll hold it in reserve against future assessments.
Against future assessments, right.
All right, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Don't forget to take a vote this time. All right, hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. All right, now we're opening a hearing for the fiscal year 2024 budget. I'll open that at 7:09. Mr. Town Administrator?
Mr. Chairman, this number that we're presenting tonight is equal to the number that is presented in the override amount. So this would be going into, if it was a successful override, this would be our draft budget with the department's requests that we would necessarily put forward and make at the town meeting if the override passed.
So you suggest we go through each department?
I think that would be, just like any other budget hearing, on a normal year, we would do this, we'd have the same exercise.
Okay. Town clerk?
So what did you want me to talk on, the proposed budget without the cut or the?
With the override.
With the override, okay. Sorry, just wanted to make sure I knew what you were looking for. So what I am proposing, and I just noticed this evening that I had taken an incorrect number for the assistant town clerk. I missed the added amount that they had when they get the raises last year, so I am short 1,351, so I'm going to have to rework that. I'll still stay within the bottom line that I had, but I'm going to have to rework that. So what I'm proposing is not to cut any hours for myself or for my assistant town clerk because of all the elections and the work that we have for that. We still have to be there to do that. Sick time buyback with, with the override, I kept that in there. Expenses, I kept the same, I level funded those, which is tight. I think right now I have $24 left in my expense account, so I didn't want to cut that too much. The election expenses, I was able to cut that down to 8,000. The chapter 440, that's when we do the census and the mailing, so there's no room for me to cut that. I actually increased that a little bit because of the postage going up. So I put that up to 5,500. Dog tag, dog licenses and tags, I put that up a little as well because that account is just about empty right now. The prices of those have gone up as well. Bylaw codification, now that's something that you never can really tell. We have our annual maintenance fee, but it depends on how many changes to the bylaw get voted in at the town meetings. Currently, we do that twice a year. There is no cost savings if we did it just one time combined. It's still the same amount of changes that they're making. So I put that at 4,200. That may or may not, I think that should be enough. It's a safe estimate. It might even go down depending on, you know, what changes we bring at the town meeting. And the rest is just the annual maintenance fees. They did go up a little bit, but that's only because that's what we're charged. Pole pads stayed the same, but the voting equipment and the clickers for our town meeting, the annual maintenance fees went up. So really, there's very, very little room for wiggle in there.
Any questions for the town clerk? Thank you, Laurie.
Okay, thank you.
Assessor, please.
Right, so I didn't cut my salary. John had cut my clerk's salary in half. I'm looking for my longevity pay. That went up by $200 because I jumped up from being here longer. My computer expense went down by $55. My mapping company, that went down by $300 because I found out from the state that the footprints on the maps are free now through the state. My general expenses, $600, I left that in there. My education for my classes and dues and everything is, I didn't touch that. The Vision Cloud, that went up about $824, so I added that in. The interim year adjustments, John, that's $4,500 this year. It went up $500 from prior years. It's been $4,000 for at least the last 10, 15 years, and they just went up this year. So that needs to be adjusted on the paperwork you have, John. And then on the personal property, that increased by $1,500 for their software.
Any questions? Thank you. Library?
Good evening. I want you all to know that we could all be down at the library watching the bad movie of the month instead of being here, so I almost brought you all popcorn. We are mandated by the state to have an increase in our budget each year in order to remain certified, so my budget, assuming the override, takes into account that mandated increase, which is 2.5%. The increases in large part are things like telephone utilities, maintenance contracts, all of which we are running over this year because they're necessary expenses and they've gone up. So it's really only taking into account the increased expenditures. And then we are mandated, again, our materials expenditure must be 16% of our overall town appropriation, so that number goes up to reflect the increased total budget.
Any questions? Questions for the crowd? All right, thank you. Highway?
So the budget that I presented for the, with 10% reduction eliminated the position of the foreman's salary, which would have put, placed more of the burden on me for oversight of day-to-day operations in the, in the field. This, this budget would restore or maintain that, that position. would restore or maintain that, that position, um, but, uh, there would be a loss of one, still a loss of one truck driver that's remained on field. Um, there's the addition of dam, dam inspections that had been unfunded before and MS four, stormwater management, uh, that had been.
So, those, those are funded, but they're under the municipal heading?
Okay.
At twenty, at those, at both of those levels, so, um, I just didn't have a chance, we left it as it was at the end of the day today, but those are both funded at the level requested.
Okay.
What close to it anyway?
The, uh, most significant change would be the, uh, there was, um, two percent increase in, uh, due to contract, contractual obligations for the, uh, union employees, um, and, uh, essentially, the, uh, the budget, uh, the existing budget would, would remain level with, uh, with what stands right now.
Any questions?
So Jeff, you start the foreman, but you lose the vacant position that we'd been holding?
Correct.
And then building your grounds remains a one-man operation, it used to be two and a?
Uh, this would take into consideration a, uh, part-time seasonal employee for approximately fourteen weeks.
Summertime?
Summertime.
Okay, but we, he wouldn't get the assistant back, whatever it's called?
No.
Alright.
And, um, uh, again, if the, uh, as John said, if the, uh, dam inspections and MS four are funded through the, uh, municipal budget, then that would, that would, uh, work towards retaining the, uh, the driver's position.
Right, oh, okay, alright, so he's gonna shift it. Alright. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Board of health?
So on, um, my budget, we submitted an increase for our agent, we were hoping to get a full-time agent, provided everything, so I submitted an increase from thirty thousand for a ten-hour a week agent to fifty, uh, to, excuse me, eighty thousand for a, um, forty-hour a week full-time agent. Most of the other items were just level funded, um, nothing else really changed, um, with the exception of increasing expenses for, um, the food inspection by five thousand.
Any questions for the board?
I just wanna, and, and Jen and I discussed the full-time agent, and at the eleventh hour, I pulled the cap rug out from underneath her because I thought that maybe, as we, as we drew down from one point eight, I think that we could probably negotiate more hours or more time or more, more support within the existing IMA without taking that extra leap into, for now, at least for the year coming up, in, uh, into hiring a, a full-time agent, so, we're gonna take a shot at doing it that way for us.
We will have, I, I wanna hear more about that, because I have con, some concerns with the IMA right now.
I have concerns as well. So, let's discuss, discuss that further.
Thank you, yeah, but I'm, anything is better than nothing at this point. Thank you.
Correct. Uh, veterans services.
Good afternoon, our chairman. Um, last Monday, we went over the ten percent deductions, um, here, if the override is passed and successful, um, we still have brought down the budget from what it was, a hundred and fifty thousand, down to one thirty with the, with the line item dealing with chapter one one five, which is veterans benefits, uh, through the Commonwealth, uh, system. So, we consistently work, and I've been doing it since I've been here, is try to transfer veterans from state benefits, um, onto a pension, which would be from the VA, uh, through the federal government, and we're still working on that. I had, did have some success today, I got word, there will be some money additional returned back to the town of Dudley from a, a claim I just, um, successfully went through, retroactive. Um, I'm still working with the state, how much exactly that's gonna be, but it'll be a little bit of money. So, we're always working, trying to transfer where they need to be, and the federal government should be, uh, giving pensions to these veterans who receive these disabilities, um, and the widows as well, from losing their husband to these diseases or injuries suffered during war or even in training. Um, so it's consistent, but right now, the, the budget has been brought down and, um, the override goes through, it's supposed to be, it'd be very positive for the veteran community.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We've heard enough from you, Mr. Chairman.
Town accountant.
Um, my budget didn't really change that much, I mean, it went down to a hundred and sixteen with the override, so my salary line item is up higher, just in case, in case something happens and I'm replaced, because I don't think anybody's gonna work for what I make, so Jonathan added some more there. And then he, uh, cut the assistant in half, because right now, we really don't have a full-time assistant, I just have an assistant for like, um, forty-eight hours a week, so that should work, and the expenses, they're okay because of the bottom-line budget, so I could always move some around if I had to. And the information technology, the, um, the only one that's really cut quite a bit is my salary, the coordinator one, so the rest are okay, so that would have to cut some hours out of me. Well, that's about it.
Any questions?
Thanks, Debbie.
Please, chief.
Uh, good evening. The, um, the budget, basically, a lot of it is by contract, uh, the officers, uh, have a contract with the, uh, with the town, uh, that requires them to get a raise, uh, there's some ish, requirements for education incentives, so the biggest issue is that, the biggest ones that I, I, on my budget that increased was expenses, which, um, of the expense, uh, one of the cruisers is leased vehicle, so for the next, uh, two and a half years, we have to take twenty-two thousand dollars automatically for a lease unless we wanna get a reboot. Um, the other big difference is, um, there was a little bit of an increase in the education incentive, the Quinn bill, and also, the, if you look at the, the line items, um, everything got broken down by patrol now, so we had, uh, all the officers all summed them, summed into one patrol, uh, line item, now they're all separate line items. If you look at, there's a social worker slash detective, right now, uh, the lieutenant position follows up with any overdoses, any, um, domestic violence cases, any, um, um, any cases where there's, uh, somebody who have, maybe had mental health issues, it's recommended that a, a position in plain clothes, like a detective, follows up with it, especially with recovery coaches and stuff like that, um, so that's included in the budget. And the, um, the other line item, the fuel, uh, that went up ten thousand dollars, um, hopefully, gas prices go down, but I just wanted to make sure that I have enough money for the fuel. Um, other than that, everything else is just by, uh, contract. Thank you.
Any questions for chief?
Thank you.
Treasurer collector?
First portion of the budget is the maintenance of treasurer collector, salary, certification, we have the two assistants, the clerk is a very modest dollar amount, um, and then almost out of line, certification is up there in longevity, Lisa and I have been here a while, the assessor, those are relatively static, the data processing line holds the line for what we have to operate, the collector's side, the software upgrade is the second year bill, so that's the actual twelve-two-twenty-one. So, we're gonna bring forward what we have, not gonna be able to expand in this year, but I think we have enough capacity in the system that's there now, uh, perhaps next year, we could, we could do something with that. Uh, I'll take the postage and I'll take the Medicare almost at the same time, uh, these are expenses throughout the general fund that sit in the treasurer collector's office, the postage is, the machine is funded and postage is used judiciously, but ultimately funded out of the office, same thing with Medicare, if we go through and we pay somebody their forty-hour week, there needs to be the employer match, again, that is where this For this budget cycle coming up, we have a decent amount in the unemployment trust, we may have to add to that if we get to that position where there's going to be some cuts, but we have the, we have the trust set up for the rainy day and it is, it is raining. The county retirement, again, is the bill we've got from the Worcester Regional Retirement System, this is where we've gone through, we have the actuarial valuation that goes through and says this is the general fund, it goes into a deeper dive as far as, um, normal cost, unfunded accrued actuarial liability, uh, and it breaks out your early retirements, it will break out the water sewer costing components for there. If we go to the group insurance, that's our health, as everyone recalls, we're part of the Hampshire Council of Governments Insurance Trust, this year, we're projecting a six percent increase, in actuality, they've been cannibalizing maybe to the tune of eight million dollars over the last eighteen months. So at the end of the day, we're not buying insurance, there is a trust that funds the insurance, it's been capitalized, it's overcapitalized, so they've been cannibalizing part of that trust money to offer a lower-than-market price rate. So we're taking advantage of monies earned previously, so the six percent reasonably could have been as high as eight or ten. Um, but for the previous year or two, they've been cannibalizing, uh, we've mentioned Medicare tax, the insurance general, the insurance general, we are with the state pool, it's a conservative estimate for the renewal, uh, the latest number as of today will be available in two months. We will have added newer vehicles, we will have updates to, uh, to some of our infrastructure, and we've added a few other items, uh, we, we added a drone, we have notary insurance, there are certain things that weren't specifically singled out, and the board has gone through, adopted policies for use, and we have those policies written, so the town has a very limited exposure. Next two items, mat- maturing debt, maturing debt interest, um, those are our current issuances, uh, for the upcoming year, as was spoken about previously, not everything that's going to be paid from those line items is going to be debt-excluded, but what is going to be debt-excluded has been vetted between, uh, the town accountant, town administrator, and, uh, Matt Abrahams, the Webster Dudley Intermunicipal Agreement, again, this is a debt payment, it's debt-excluded but sits in the treasurer collector's budget, it's a one-for-one, uh, the Webster Dispatch Assessment is a number, again, it sits in the treasurer collector's budget, um, it is a bill essentially from the group that we are in, the OPEB trust is in there, um, we should always be adding to it, uh, every day that clicks by our obligations to future retirees increases, so we could never put enough money in there, it's good to have that ten thousand dollars, it'd be even better to put, to put more, again, that is, that is your rainy day fund, at one point, you would be, you would have enough in your OPEB where you would be offsetting the budgeted amount by the earnings that you had in the trust account.
Any questions? Alright, thanks, Richard. Thank you. Fire department.
So, basically, uh, the contractual agreements are the same in this budget as they were in the, uh, ten percent reduction. Um, the things that we worry, everything that was reduced to a dollar was brought up to level funding, just highlights on that, the cancer screenings were brought up to level funding, lifeguards were brought up to level funding, um, emergency management was brought up to level funding, um, a couple of lines, uh, we put the, the two new positions in there, as that will save in overtime, I spend a considerable amount more than what's in my overtime line every year, by probably about double, um, the two positions will save at least sixty thousand per year, and that's a conservative number, I think I can save more, um, so that essentially pays for one of those positions, um, and, uh, ambulance call, career expenses, which pays for our ambulance equipment, that would, there was a slight increase in that, um, and the call firefighter salary, I increased that a little bit, other than that, it was really just restoring all those items that we reduced to a dollar.
Any questions for the fire chief? Hear none, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, uh, select board and FAA, uh, for the, uh, district assessment, uh, please, uh, note that we did have our budget hearing last night at the, uh, school committee, um, and they did vote on a, a, a total budget, as well as the assessment for both Dudley and for the community of Charlton. Uh, in es- in essence, our budget, um, with a successful override is a level service budget, we're not adding additional staff, we're not adding additional programs, it's really to pay fixed costs at the value of three point four million dollars, plus a couple of other adjustments within our fiscal budget, uh, looking ahead and moving forward. So the fixed costs that, uh, the, uh, successful override will support our contractual obligations, uh, as we are the largest employer between the two towns of one, uh, one point three million dollars. Transportation costs, because we went out for a new contract this year, um, for, not only for our, uh, yellow bus transportation, but specialized transportation, that's an additional five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the district. Our out-of-district placements, as I've mentioned in the past, the OSD, Operational Services Division, uh, permitted, uh, specialized programs to increase their tuitions by fourteen percent, uh, we, uh, we own that, um, and then additional, uh, services for students at a value of increase of six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Employee benefits and health insurance, uh, an increase of four hundred and ninety-three thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars. Utilities, as we've all experienced, an increase of four hundred and thirty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. And then, as I mentioned, beyond the three point four million dollars, we have, um, a couple of other items, instructional technology, seventy-five thousand dollars, as we try to work on a replacement program, and then a rest, a restoration of one position at a value of forty-five thousand dollars in our district office, as well as transitioning some partial salaries from our ESAR funds, uh, to the operating budget at a, at a total value of a hundred and five thousand dollars. Keep in mind, a successful override as well addresses the assessments that will be coming forward to the community of Dudley, uh, that is the roof, which we spoke about as well, the roof was, uh, the community of Dudley passed, um, that, that capital improvement, so that assessment is coming forward, so a successful override addresses a lot of that value, and it also addresses the feasibility study. Uh, we are, uh, after about fourteen years of submitting statement of interest for the Shepherd Hill Regional High School to look at renovations, uh, we were invited into a eligibility period with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, in order to move to the next phase, we need local authorization for a feasibility study, um, and that has to occur by June twenty twenty-three, uh, that's a value of, uh, four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars for the community of Dudley, um, and again, that is part of a successful override as well, so, that addresses the, the school, again, it's a level service budget.
Any questions for superintendent?
Not a question, Mr. Chair, but, uh, Superintendent Lamarche, for people out there that questioning the rationale behind the feasibility study, let's be clear, in order to continue in the process, we need to do it.
Correct, if, if I.
If you don't do it, you're out.
If you don't do it, they, uh, Massachusetts School Building Authority will work with you, but they won't work with you forever, they'll work with you for a month or two to try to get it back to the voters, to see if you have success, a local authorization, and then from there, because they set an annual And then from there, because they set an annual budget, they will move on to somebody else who's looking for a project that a community would support to get into the feasibility stage. Once you're in the feasibility stage, which is again, is 2020, we need it by June 2023, this June. Once you're in there, you can take up to two years because feasibility goes from feasibility all the way to schematic design based off of what the community input is on that. That could take a two-year process. But you can't enter that unless you get local authorization for feasibility by this June. Again, MSBA will work with you, maybe July and August, to get it back in front of the voters. But it's not a forever or infinite or wait till next year kind of program. They move on.
So again, it's just one step, it's a one step with a big step in the process that we've been trying to get in for over a decade.
Yep. And every step from this point forward is brought to the voters to continue. But it is, in order to get to the next step, which they, they would put us, if we were successful by June 2023, we would be on their June board meeting in June to be invited into the next step. Otherwise, they, they don't meet monthly. They meet more quarterly as an organization because it's run by the state treasurer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
All right. We're going to close the hearing at 7:38. Board, Selectman, FAA. Anyone like to make a motion? Mr. Marsh?
Chairman, I move that we accept the FY '24 draft budget that considers a successful passage of the override.
Second.
Second. Any other discussion?
I will say, Mr. Chairman, things like the health inspector, the health agent, we're going to keep, we're going to keep within that 1.6 override number. We're going to keep within this budget. A lot of the budget is here already going forward if we have a successful override. But we're going to have an opportunity to take, to take another look at this as things progress and maybe our revenues come into a more specific light. Debbie mentioned that we, we're very conservative with some of our revenue projections. And I think that, you know, before this is over, we'll make a few more adjustments. But this is going to be the bones of the, of the proposed budget for successful override.
Public safety and public health are all, are all important, right? So it's got to, it's got to be done. Police and fire and the health department. All right. We've got, any other discussion?
I just asked a question.
Sure.
Earlier, Mike, you voted on a, you made a, a motion to approve $20,971,226 for the reduced budget. It's really 25,238,853. Just want to make sure you got the right amount. It's on the very last page, would be the one that you would need to vote on.
That's the overlay. Oh, that's including the water and sewer?
It's including everything, the cherry sheet offset and the overlay. Just wanted to make sure, you know, your vote covers the whole budget, not just the general part.
We can, we can amend our motion if we want to include water and sewer. Do that?
Square this one away. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Mike?
Does anybody want to make a motion with the water and sewer? Amounts for the 20. Amend that first recommendation to 25,238.
I'd like to amend my motion for the amount, including the water and the sewer. And it would be $25,268. Of 238,853.
Wait a second.
25 million, Mike.
25 million, rather. Ian?
My second.
Okay. Okay. Any discussion on it? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you.
So just so everyone knows, that was the amended of the 10% reduction budget.
Yes.
Okay.
To include the water and sewer directs and all that.
So now the, with the override, you can do that one now?
Will be, yeah. Okay. So the override one would be going on the bottom right here.
You need another whole motion?
We'll make a motion with, for the budget with an override.
Make a motion to accept and approve the budget with the override.
All right. Your second on that?
My second.
Any discussion on that? The only thing I want to kind of mention on that is, is part of the budget with the override, just to kind of make it clear that part of that override involves capital improvements of about 1.9 million for the, well, the, the survey for the, for the new school and the, and the roofs typically, that would typically be debt-excluded typically in a normal year. So we're going to, we're going to pass an override for that money that continues on. I want everybody to understand that. So an override is permanent. Correct?
So, Mr. Chairman, we're going to have a, on the 22nd, we're going to have a public forum. Is that the correct date?
Yep.
And we're going to have the town, we're going to have the school administration, and we're going to have Matt and Mark Abrahams come in again and show you, and show the public how that 24, $11 million assessment, how those, that 13 mil, that those additional amounts are portioned, and how it's going to be carried forward.
Carried forward, okay.
To the educational stabilization account to get us into the future.
Just wanted to make sure that they were clear on that.
We'll run through it step by step so everybody understands.
Okay. Thank you. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Marsh? Mr. Chairman, just harkening back to something Kerry said earlier through you to the town administrator. So now that we've voted on all these things, there's something in our packet that talks about what this means to the average taxpayer. Can you talk about that in like real numbers?
Is Lisa still here?
Lisa's here. I just think we'd be remiss if we didn't bring this up tonight. Rich with the assist.
So what's the question? I'm sorry.
Can you just talk about your sheet that you did for me?
Oh, sure.
The effect on the annual tax bill with the two and a half?
We're asking people to go to the ballot and vote for an override. And we haven't really talked about much what that means, Lisa, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. So for the 4.8 million, two and a half override, there would be an increase to the tax rate of $3.34. The average single-family tax bill is 360,942. At our current tax rate, that's an average tax bill of $3,667.17 for the year. If we add the $3.34 to the tax rate for the override, that would bring the tax rate up to $13.50. And the average single-family tax bill would be 4,872.72, which would be an average increase of $1,205.55 in the tax bill. Per year. Per year. And when the override went through in 2018, the tax rate was higher than this. I believe it was 1370 back then. That was for the fire station and the school.
But of course, it was a reduced valuation in homes. So it didn't, it didn't translate to this.
And I believe, I believe the tax rate will probably go down again this year because the assessments are going back up again. We haven't seen any leveling out right now in sales. My assessments are still too low compared to what the sales are right now. So assessments increase, the tax rate decreases.
So I, I, I know like tax rate, $10.16. I know for, for some people, that won't mean much. What means is how much they're paying. So right now, the average homeowner in Dudley is paying $3,667.17. That's their average yearly tax bill.
Correct.
With this override passing, it will go to $4,872.72.
Correct.
The average tax bill will go up $1,205.55.
Correct. And that may be less, like I said, if the assessments go up, the tax rate's going to go down. So your base tax rate would be lower than the 10.16 and then add $3.34 on.
So if the assessments go up, will that average increase per bill of $1,205.55, will that change?
It depends on the assessment. It depends on what the average single-family tax bill will be for fiscal 2024, and we don't know that right now.
So we don't know?
No.
But not more than 2.5%.
Right. We can't go over the 2.5%. So that's why if the assessments go up again, the tax rate has to go down again. Otherwise, we take in more than 2.5%.
I, I guess what I'm asking is the average increase per tax bill, will that change regardless?
Well, if your assessment goes up and your tax rate goes down, I mean, you could break even. It could be a little bit lower. I mean, it depends on what the average single-family tax bill will be. Kind of a, a moving number.
So just another point of clarification. If I understand it correctly, the, the tax rate is really independent. You don't set the tax rate. The assessments and the 2.5 increase really set the tax rate.
The assessment and the budget determines the tax rate, correct?
I guess I'm just trying to determine the financial impact so that people that are voting can know, I'm paying this for this.
Sure.
If I don't want to pay that, I lose it. I lose this. That's all. I'm just trying to get to the, trying to make it easy to understand for people because if someone's watching all of these meetings, it's a lot of, a lot of information to digest. And if you're working, you've got kids, you've got lacrosse and baseball and football and cheering and whatever else, you don't have six hours to sit down and digest all of this. I'm just trying to give, you know, the information people need. Because I think if they don't know, yeah.
And we, we don't know what the new assessments are going to be because we don't do it until September, October. Because we have to use the last completed calendar year worth of sales, which would be 2022. We're in 2023. We're always a year behind the market. And I, I do see the houses are, are selling for $100,000 to $180,000 more than I have them assessed for now. And I really increased them a lot this year during our mass reevaluation. I can't keep up with them.
I'm, I'm just trying to get the voters more information. I don't mean to put a spotlight on you.
No, that's okay. If I, if I, if I could get you what the average single-family assessment would be, I mean, that would give you a straight answer. But I, I can't look at my crystal ball and see what that's going to be.
Yeah. Mine, the batteries, the batteries are dead. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
One more point. But bottom line, this is what needs to be told and retold and put out there along with what we have and what we, what we won't have. This is what people are asking us for.
Right.
Make sure they know these numbers.
And, Mr. Chairman, that exercise about the 2.5%, the valuation goes up, the tax rate gets adjusted, so it's always artificially 2.5% and no more, not a penny more. In comparison, our contractual obligations went up $400,000 in the last year. Our new growth went up minimal, like a quarter of that. So that's why we have to do this exercise every so often because 2.5% is insufficient to, to meet the needs of keeping services flowing through the town. That's the bottom line. That proposition, 2.5, for lack of a better word, circuit breaker, prohibits anybody in this room, who's otherwise, unless you're in the, in the ballot box, from making any more of a tax rate adjustment above and beyond 2.5%. So when our expenses go up 4%, 5%, 6%, 8%, our contractual obligation is longer than $400,000. For a minimal staff, no question about it, this is the action that we have to take in the absence of, of economic growth that will meet that number and exceed it.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
Can I ask either Mr. Lamarche or Mr. Matthews, to just to come up and talk a little bit about the concept behind the Educational Stabilization Fund that we're going to try to create and fund through all this profit? I mean, I, I just want people to realize too that there's some forward thinking going on too, where we're not going to come back with bill after bill, hopefully. We'll have some way to mitigate some of those expenses.
Yes. Thank you for allowing us to talk on this. So we were asked to, to think about a, a way to find funding in the future so that, we're all very familiar, we've all been here for, for a few years. Each and every year, our budget is a struggle. Each and every year, you know, we're told that our assessment to Dudley can go up by 2.5% because that's the amount that you are able to raise, you know, at least half of your revenues, if not maybe 60% of your revenues based on the real estate tax. So by prepaying, by paying for the feasibility study and paying for the, some of the capital projects through the operational override, what that will allow in years two and forward is for that $1.9 million to be partially used for future assessments as well as partially put into an educational stabilization fund. And as, as we go through the years, that stabilization fund will hopefully increase in years two and three and then start to get drawn down. But that's dependent on our actual assessment in fiscal '25, in fiscal '26, in fiscal '27, and fiscal '28. We have hoped and, and the goal in the, for the 2018 override was to try to provide a 3% budget increase, given the needs of students and everything that we're experiencing on the school side coming out of COVID. It perhaps could look a little bit more. So this would allow for, in the range of roughly a 4% type budget increase for Dudley-Charlton going forward. And again, last through a couple of years. So we certainly, you know, appreciate that opportunity. I don't think anybody want, wanted to be back here after, after going through, you know, a major push for an override and say, okay, well, that was great last year. Now this year, we're back to square one. So again, to your point, Mr. Sullivan, we are trying to think forward. We are trying to come up with future solutions. Ideally, this lasts longer than, you know, the projected five years that, that you may or may not have seen in, in the shared spreadsheet. But, you know, the, the goal is, again, to provide adequate funding for the district from the Dudley assessments moving forward. And obviously, we have a, Dudley and the region have a shared partner in the town of Charlton as well. And we have to work with them to make sure that they are able to keep pace with our needs and funding of assessments. You all are very aware, Chapter 70 has not increased dramatically for the district in many, many years. We've seen that through the Abrams report. The district cannot commit any more of its own free cash. One of the goals that school committee had for the beginning part, for, for this budget cycle, and, you know, knowing that we were talking about an override since last budget season, was to reduce and eliminate, hopefully, that reliance on RE and D each and every year so that we could have indeed a level of stabilization, if you will, or available free cash. But given the rate of increases in virtually everything that we've touched and looked at, we're not able to unfortunately tackle that, given these numbers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
All right, we did all the motions. On to new business. We have a meeting calendar. Town administrator, you want to walk us through it?
Sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. So Monday, I don't think we need a joint meeting with the FAA.
Oh, thank you.
Because we dispensed with a lot of the stuff we needed to do tonight. So now we kind of have to set it and forget it and see what happens next to plan on these upcoming meetings. So I just wanted to go through this modified calendar. My thought was that we could probably eliminate our March twentieth meeting, which is currently on the schedule, and do this Monday, March thirteenth, and then do, do the following Thursday, if needed, March twenty-second, twenty-sixth.
Sixteenth.
It's the sixteenth?
Yeah.
Is that what you were trying to tell me yesterday?
Yep.
Okay. Do, do we need a joint meeting, Mr. Chairman, on the sixteenth? Okay, so we'll eliminate that.
Unless there's any, any major changes, John.
Right. Well, that was, I just put it in there, I won't call that meeting unless there are. So I guess we're back on, we're back on a, on to the March twentieth. Is there any objection to me eliminating that from our schedule? It's, okay. March twenty-seventh is a regular meeting, we'll leave that. April tenth, I'm always going to leave that tentative as a joint meeting because it's getting pretty close at that point, so I'll leave that on the schedule. We'll have to do our, our regular capital improvement meeting. I don't think there's going to be a lot of capital requests this time around beyond, you know, beyond our, our better mentally infrastructure.
Is, do you have anything scheduled for that? Anything at all?
For capital improvement? No, but I think maybe the highway superintendent might have to update a road that's going on to the warrant.
Probably going to need, probably going to need the police car to, purchasing one this year too.
We have another purchase coming up, Chief.
It was already approved, I believe, a meeting three years ago. What's recruiters and.
Yeah, but we still going to have.
Want to just, maybe we'll just update the amounts because I'm sure there's changed a lot since then. Okay, so it's going to be minimal anyway. And then the, of course, the, we could do an FAA board of selectmen joint if required after that, I think it probably might be. Then Monday, the regular meeting on April twenty-fourth, maybe we shouldn't meet unless we need to.
What does final vote FY twenty-four, Mr. Chairman, mean on that one?
The final vote for FY, FY twenty-four doesn't have to happen that night. That would be for the new budget, that the override passes, I don't want to jinx it by actually having a vote the day before the vote. So maybe we just dispense with that and take it up after that, after the vote on the twenty-fifth?
So that could be pushed, that would be a May eighth discussion?
Yeah, and so that would be a May eighth, we'll make that a joint. Is a Monday all right, Mr. Chairman? Do you want to do here?
We'll see, yeah.
Too bad, Charlie.
Okay. We don't have to vote on that, I just wanted to get everybody's opinion.
Makes sense.
I'll make those changes.
Thank you. All right, old business. Highway superintendent update on Brandon Road and Mill Race Bridge.
Even when that's finished, we'll still keep that on agenda.
So the same as I had reported in the past, we, we had an RFP that we put out, had a successful bidder, and it's intended to, that will begin with the demolition of the bridge sometime in the month of April, hopefully at the, towards the beginning of the month. So in the process of putting together a, a contract for that work to happen. Will still require a review by the, by the conservation commission with an order that'll be placed for that. Do you want me to continue with my?
Yes, please.
The rest of my report as well?
I won't, I won't make you get up twice.
Excuse me?
I won't make you get up twice.
Okay. So we've been very fortunate that we haven't had a, a bunch of snow to deal with this year. We're still out doing maintenance on the, the roadways, doing trimming and some patching. We have a hot box that the crews were able to go out and do patching throughout any of the, any of the cold weather. We're using the brine, brine machines, brine spreader. It's allowed us to go out and pre-treat in advance of the storms. It's actually given us a leg up on, on being able to maintain the roads better. I, I have had a couple of conversations and calls from residents with concerns about an increase to the corrosiveness on their vehicles. It's a, it's a salt brine that we're using, it's not magnesium chloride or any other additives that we're putting in it that increase the corrosiveness. It's actually, we actually, it assists us in using less corrosive material on the roadways. It's about, when we treat with the brine, it's about twenty-five percent of what would be used if we were to just use the typical road salt anyway. So we're actually right now at about maybe thirty percent of what we used last year for road salt to maintain the roads, so we're in pretty good shape. That's about it.
Thanks, Rich.
So just quickly for a departmental update. It is a busy time. Just as a, a quick commentary, we had someone at the beginning of last week go, who uses cash? I have to worry about the bandidos. There is a, a strong segment in this town who pays early and cash on the barrelhead. So not the easiest thing to process, but just something that I found unique. We still have those other options. It's good to put your best foot forward and make sure that anybody who has a bill outstanding can get that done. Quick circle back to the budget. We still have time right now for Maya to go through and get your educational, your little trainings in. There's training twelve months out of the year, but you want to be able to go through and look at your representative and said, the town of Dudley had some opportunities and we took advantage of them. And it's almost like a credit union. The longer we are there, the more we participate, the more favorable a renewal is going to look. That is a good thing. This is the same insurance company who's currently handling a, a claim and things are moving along. There's very little red tape. Next week is going to be a big week because we have the excise due, same thing with the water and sewer, so expected to be lively. Beyond that, appreciate everybody's time. Again, we, we've sort of reached an end point here, at least as far as the budget goes. Email still works. If there's something that's a question, please reach out. Little easier for me to give a deeper dive if there's a specific question and a follow-up question. Always happy to share that information. My own little commentary, as far as the, the effect on the tax bill, Lisa is very skilled, but she is a hundred percent right. It is a moving target, and you are going to see something at the presentation that's coming up, which should absolutely mirror what was said here. You're aiming for a net effect on the tax rate. You have a firm that's very well-versed. Anybody who has any opinions, left, right, up, or down, I would hang my hat on what they are saying to be the best answer. So back to Mr. Sullivan's point, you know, this is, this is where you would get your good information and make your informed decision. I would ask everybody to attend or to get their hands on, you know, the, the solid information that goes out. No one pulls an answer out, out of the sky. This has been done several times in several communities, and it's for everybody's benefit. When you cast that vote, it should be an educated vote, not, not anything else, and I'd leave it at that. Appreciate everybody's time. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Chief? None? Chief? Nothing?
Oh, wow.
Water sewer?
Yeah, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge the fact that our superintendent's wife passed on Monday night. He's not here today, obviously, for, for that reason, but it's been a lo, long battle and it's over. But just wanted to acknowledge that. Keep George and your thoughts and prayers, George and the rest of his family.
Thank you, Scott.
Also, we just had a couple of meetings this week. The next stage of the PFAS project is going to be kicking off right around the beginning of May, May first is what, is the scheduled date. Be a lot of road work. West Main Street, Prospect, I always get Prospect and Progress mixed up, and Ellis, Warsaw, Fairview, and then through the woods. But there'll be a lot of work going on through the summer and fall on those roadways, just to let people know.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Student reps not here. Selectmen comments, Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to thank everyone for attending this evening, sharing their budgets, their comments, and information with all of us. I know it's a tiring process, it's a lot of changes, it keeps, keeps us on our toes, but it's something that does need to get done. And thank the town administrator as well for orchestrating all of this. Without him, it wouldn't be possible. Thank you.
Mr. Sinavich?
No, I've got nothing, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I echo what Mark Landry just said to Mr. Ruder and our entire staff, top to bottom. Everybody's put forth a professional effort. These are real numbers, nobody's scared anybody, nobody's trying to put a fear out there to generate some kind of artificial support. It is what it is, as Kerry said, if this doesn't happen, this is what you get. If this happens, this is what you get. Also, we're not going to meet Monday now, Mr. Administrator, right?
We're going to meet the thirteenth, but not the twentieth.
Okay.
And we'll get on with other business.
All right, I'll wait till Monday then, but yeah, thank you for your chances.
Mr. Best, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll echo what the others said, you know, thanks to everybody, it's a lot of work, especially, you know, a lot of the volunteers on the other boards. Thank you for your attention to detail on this. It's not something that, you know, we do, you know, all year, but a couple times during the year, this stuff comes up, and I know, I appreciate it. To those residents that have reached out to me already, I, I hope that some of the information that you've asked for is, is starting to come out. We start, talked about that today, like the process of what happens next, what's in it for you, we're going to be getting that out. So you have, you have all the information you need to decide, you know, what kind of town you want to have going forward. So thank you, Jonathan, for putting that together, the assessor, and, and all the other department heads for getting those numbers out, because at the end of the day, that's what everybody is asking for. And you have that out there. This isn't a fear, a fear-based budget, no matter what I've, I've heard and read. This is real. It's stark, it's grim, as Mr. Landry said, but we have, we have choices. So let's, let's get all the data out there. I've always, I said it a few times, takes five to seven times for things to sort of sink in. We'll just keep telling everybody and so they can decide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So ten percent cost reductions are nothing to just gloss over, also doesn't require, you know, monstrous amounts of emotion, I guess. It's, it's a, it's a fact-based part of planning, and the expectation would be that everyone does that in a professional manner, and I think that's, that's what was done in this case. You know, the idea that towns are immune to the effects of what happens in, in the world with the economic inflationary pressures, is a nice way to say it, I guess, you know, is, is really, we're not, we're not immune, and there's a number of variable costs that unable to be controlled in a two and a half percent manner on times like this. So let's move forward with the process, let the, let the voters decide. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.